The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
I move that the board convene in closed session in room 337 pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, print one, print G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, to wit potential litigation matter pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, print one, print C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five, print one, print F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where par B applies, which, if discussed in public, would likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit emeritus break in service and safety and well-being of staff. The board will convene in open session at six P.M. pursuant to section nineteen point eight five, print two, Wisconsin statute, to consider the balance of the agenda, which will include an open forum, system and monitoring reports, and the superintendent's update. The board may reconvene in closed session after the conclusion of the regular board meeting for such reasons noted in this posting pursuant to a proper motion. The board may return to open session to vote on items discussed in closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sandy?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carrie, five zero. We're convening across the hall.
Board reconvene in open session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five, print two, Wisconsin statute, to consider the balance of the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I'm gonna go back, 'cause I didn't take roll call, so I asked Sandy to do that.
Becker?
Here.
Maloney?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Sidney?
Excused.
Danenbog?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Barbian?
Ballch?
Here.
All right, we have six board members present. Also joining us at the table is, to my left, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, our two intercity student council members, Jamie Barbian, who's president of intercity student council from West High School, and Philip Ballch, who's from Prebble, and also Sandy Heller, our board secretary. I wanna remind members of the public that you can view the board agenda and handouts as well as minutes.
To come back into open session.
Oh, God, I forgot, sorry. All right, Sandy, we'll vote.
Go ahead. Aye. Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Danenbog?
Aye.
Carrie, six zero. All right, then, I'll remind the members of the public, you can view our minutes from past meetings by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org, clicking on our district at the top, and then Board of Education on the left. On the left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune, where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. Also, tonight, the board will provide our community with two different opportunities to speak before the board. All speakers must fill out a form indicating their desire to speak. If you wish to speak during tonight's open forum, you may do so with respect to items that are posted on tonight's agenda, or any other matter you wish to share with the board. Please know that Wisconsin's open meeting laws prohibits the board from conducting business on matters brought during this open forum. The board will also permit public participation during agenda items that the Board of Education will be voting on, as noted on the board's agenda where it says "public comment." During this public participation time, consistent with state and federal laws, board members may engage in dialogue with the speakers. In order that all voices are heard, the board will suspend engagement until all speakers have had a chance to speak. And if you would like to make a comment during our meeting, during that public comment time, you can grab a form out there and fill it out and hand it to Sandy, or just let Sandy know that you'd like to speak, and you can fill the form out afterwards. We ask that you please keep your comments to five minutes. The timekeeper will let you know when your five minutes has ended. Lastly, demonstrations during public comments, such as clapping or cheering in response to either public comments or statements made by board members, are prohibited. So at this time, we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, I'll ask Katie to read our mission statement.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
All right, thanks, Katie.
At this time, we'll have our open forum. I have four speakers who have indicated a desire to speak. I'll call them up in the order received. First is John Yankee.
Hello, my name is John Yankee. I live at three nineteen fourteenth Avenue here in Green Bay, and I have two sons in the district, one that goes to Green Bay West and one that goes to Kennedy. I'm here today to talk about the issue of bus safety. Obviously, everyone's seen the incident that happened in the news recently, and I was, like everyone else, very bothered by it, but it touches my life and my family's life in a different way. The disability community within a school district of twenty thousand is still very small, and within that community, there's a smaller community of people who have children who are nonverbal, and that's a community that I'm in. And so, those of us in that community, we generally, at minimum, know of each other. Our kids have gone to therapies together, have been in classrooms together, and in this case, it's no exception. And then I was even more disturbed to find out that this child and my son now share another distinction, that they've both been assaulted on a Green Bay public school bus. And so, this is a problem that came up for my son a couple years ago, where a substitute bus driver didn't understand my son's communication, and acted in frustration and assaulted my son. And so, as a result, I had worked with the district, and cameras got put on my son's school bus, eventually cameras got put on all school buses. But that's still, there's argument that that's a proactive solution, because people will know there's a camera, but any of us who've watched reality TV knows it's really a reactive solution, because eventually, people forget that camera's there, and people act the way people act. And so, now there's a way to handle something, if something happens, there's a way to document what happened and go after it, but that's still reactive. Children who are nonverbal on a bus, they can't communicate. They don't know what's going on. They don't react in the same way. They may not call out. And so, we have to find a way to protect these kids, and it's quick to, if you watch, if you look at social media, or even the regular media, the reaction is quick to blame the bus driver. But I also come from an experience of driving tractor-trailer for twenty years as a delivery driver, and we're asking bus drivers to navigate a forty-plus-foot-long vehicle through the Green Bay city streets at the busiest time of day, and navigate around kids walking at schools, busy streets, and then, by the way, keep track of all the kids on a bus. That's a lot to ask. And so, I think the district needs to do something, 'cause obviously, all these cases are private, but I would be shocked if we weren't settling lawsuits out of court. And so, we're spending money, and there is cost about, there's discussion around cost of how much it's gonna cost to put in additional aid or to do something. But as soon as this happened, we now have two district employees riding in a van to and from with the student, if the press reports are accurate. So clearly, when there's a need, we can find the money. And I've spoken before this board before about how you can identify what boards and companies, or even individuals, put a priority on by where they spend money in their budget. And it's clear that we don't put a priority on student safety. And so, especially when it comes to students who do not have a voice, I thought about bringing my son here, so he could have introduced himself with his device, and so it could have drawn a clearer picture. But my son didn't do anything wrong, so he shouldn't have to sit at a school board meeting at the age of eleven. It's a beautiful night, he should be outside, and that's where he is. But I think we have to do better, and we have to figure it out. We have to figure out the cost, because we can't keep having kids be assaulted. And we have the initial problem of the child being assaulted, and whatever that takes, and whatever medical care, whatever they need then, but then there's the long-term trauma we put on kids. What is the long-term effect of my son being assaulted, or this child being assaulted? What is the long-term effects on their ability to go out into the community and trust that they're gonna be safe? Many of these kids will not be able to drive as they get older. They're gonna have to ride public transportation their whole lives, and we've set them up to not trust this system. Then beyond that, I'm deeply concerned that I don't hear conversation around the child who committed the act on the other child. That child needed help. Had there been an aide on the bus, that would have been an opportunity to work on behaviors, 'cause many children who struggle with cognitive and mental disabilities struggle with behaviors, and we need to look for opportunities to teach them. And so, that's a missed opportunity. That child is gonna be traumatized for the rest of their life because of what happened. And that child, if the reports are to be believed, was pulled out of their school. So in addition to having this happen, they've now had their support system, their base, their school, taken from them. And where that child went, now you have parents throughout the district, is that child now in my classroom? Is that new child in my kid's classroom, is that the child that did that? We've created so many problems because we didn't do what we know is right. And I know this isn't an isolated incident, 'cause I know what happened to me. I know what happened to this child. I know other families who have had their children assaulted on Green Bay buses, and it's generally kids with disabilities and kids who are nonverbal. So, I urge the board to do whatever it takes to find the solution, to put an aide on the bus, to figure out where the money comes from. Because, and I'm not trying to, I get, I've brought up the idea, you know, the money that we spend on administrative-level spending, and I'm not trying to vilify this one area. But my point is, when we decide something's a priority, we find money for it. And my point is, we need to decide that this is a priority, that enough is enough. So, I would just encourage the board to do something, because it's, I don't want any other children to join that group. I don't want any other families to get a call that their child has been hurt, and that this child can't even tell them what happened. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, John.
Next is Alona Winslow.
Hello, good evening. Alona Winslow, I live at eight four zero West St. Francis Road and DePere. I'm speaking as a teacher at Green Bay West, and I wanna start by sharing some positive news. This Thursday, you can look for the Green Bay West greenhouse on NBC twenty-six. Last week, we had NBC twenty-six over to really take a look at our greenhouse, the things we've done. My biggest reason for it was because we had an alumni that she graduated in twenty, well, she graduated in twenty fourteen, but she came to me in twenty thirteen asking to, you know, would you fund me so I can really make this greenhouse fabulous, and it would help your science club? And we've been doing it ever since, and she's still been a strong part of that. I wanna give a shout-out to my co-advisor, Greg Sawyer, because I couldn't do it without him. This year, Culvers actually ordered fifty flowers from us, so we could give them to Mothers on Mother's Day. It was the Hanson Road Culvers. The Volunteer Center Brown County just stopped by today to pick up some flowers that they're giving to some of their volunteers. So, also, the farmer's market invited us to, I guess you call it center court, next Wednesday, to just have a booth there to kinda talk about the greenhouse, earth stock, which I know some of you attended, and some of the things that we do. So, you know, good things happen at West, and it's not always about athletics, and you never know about it if I didn't promote it. So, as a result, I've kinda talked some of my fellow teachers into making a little bit more of an effort to really think about inviting you to more events that they do. I wish you could have been to the IB Group Four project at Baird Creek this past week. It was a beautiful day, and they had probably the best group of kids ever. They told me all about it, but I wish they would've thought to invite you. So, like I said, I'm making more of an effort to do that. Now, speaking of things, such as, you know, the extra things that we do, MYP is at our school, and we have personal projects. All teachers at West have now been mandated to take on a minimum of two students next year to help guide them through their personal projects. It's a mandate, there's no extra compensation, it's just an expectation. And we're gonna do it. I'm gonna do it, because that's what I do, that's what teachers do. But, overall, in this district, what I'm asking for is, will administrators do the same, or are they gonna get raises to go along with their extra duties? Some may argue that it's only fair to pay more money for more responsibility, but I want you guys to think about that when the expectation is teachers do the same for no extra compensation, much less a raise. And I actually have a few more questions that came up in my discussion with my fellow teachers today. They are relatively different topics. I don't expect an answer now. I know I won't get it, but I want you guys to put it in consideration, and hopefully get back to me, or whomever, at a different time. I have a question regarding the survey for redistricting, and I noticed that IB was not addressed as a magnet school. Just wondered why. Staff perception survey, I wondered if all the board members got a chance to see the individual results. Specifically, did you get a chance to see the comments? If not, why? Because I think you should. Why are we always tightening the belt at the student level? For example, I hear that we're losing, or possibly thinking of losing some of our library-media positions at some of our schools. They are a huge and integral part of a student's educational experience, and again, kind of alluding to what Mr. Yankee said, when it's important, we seem to find the money for things, and I think these positions are incredibly important, so I hope they are not going to be eliminated. And finally, research says a lot about, what research says about high-risk population is classroom sizes should be smaller, yet I also seem to be noticing that class sizes seem to be growing, and I just wonder if it's been addressed. That's all. Thank you for your time. Yes.
Clarifying question.
Can you just clarify, MYP?
Oh, Middle Years Program.
Okay. And also, you, when you started to talk about the survey, facility survey, right, you said something wasn't designated? I didn't hear.
And like I said, unless I'm wrong, it was my understanding that on that facility survey, IB was not addressed, IB on the West Side, our school, was not addressed as a magnet school.
Was not identified as a magnet?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Next is Noah Becker.
Hello, I'm Noah Becker. I live at twelve fifty-four Reed Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin, five four, three oh three. So, I'm here tonight to talk about math for the third time, and everyone's like, oh, again. Yes, I'm back again to talk about math. A little bit different this time, though. So, now that we're nearing the, now that we're nearing next year, and we're basically out of time to change which classes are going to run next year, because, you know, we're, there's not a lot of time remaining for that, we're hearing now that West has decided, that West has decided to not run AP Calculus, AB, or Precalculus, but now that brings another question in, whether or not West really had the authority to do that. And that brings the whole point of, no one really knows what's going on right back. So, everyone's kind of confused on what's even going on at West, and as I said at our last meeting, still, nobody knows what's, still, nobody knows what's going on. Math teachers don't know what's going on, and everyone would like some sort of guidance from someone about what's going on. So, these classes, Precalculus and AP Calculus AB, weren't originally, at the very beginning, when they first did scheduling, students weren't allowed to sign up for. However, I will give credit, they did redo that and allow students to sign up for those classes, which is, which is good. However, there was still a lot of misinformation, and students were still confused about whether or not, like, I think they weren't really told a lot about Precalculus, and I think, or AP Calculus, and I think a lot of those students found their way into IB, just because of the way information was presented. The, this, the French teachers were here recently, and they came back twice, and I think this situation parallels that pretty closely, in that there's just a lot of confusion going on, and because no one knows what's happening, that would be, that is kind of how these classes ended up having very few people in them, and how the excuse to, how the excuse to not run them next year kind of came about. So, then there is another issue, which is math-related enough that I just crammed it into this same thing here. Last-minute attempts to combine regular and advanced algebra, and teachers were told, whether or not this is true or not, I don't really know, because of the amount of information that goes around, of varying credibility, is that they would be selecting whether students in the same classroom, learning basically the same things, would get the, would get to put advanced algebra on their transcript, or regular algebra one on their transcript. That seems like a pretty excessive burden to put on teachers, whether or not they get advanced algebra credit or regular algebra credit for taking the same thing. And that would lead to another problem, where any student who would get an A, would then, the teacher would give them the advanced algebra credit instead of the regular one. So, you'd have nobody getting a C, above a C, in a non-advanced algebra one class. So, that would open some problems. And another point that was brought, a lot of students were asking me, and I have no answer, so I said, I'll go to a place where they might, is why were there so many rapid-fire math changes made at the last second, like, that happened after course scheduling had happened, then a whole bunch of really quick changes happened with math, and no one, no one knows why. And it's, again, that spread of misinformation that led to a lot of IB classes running, and not a lot of AP classes running, or pre-AP classes running. So, all right, thank you.
Next, Philip Ballch.
Hello, everybody. My name's Philip Ballch. I live on three two one Huddleburg Court. So, to start off, I'm a student at Prebble High School, and today, I'd like to talk about the new nutrition plans that have come on. So, this past year, I've noticed a lot of changes with, like, the, I guess, like, for one, the school store, and then recently, the cookies that the special ed department offers have been changed. And also, I've heard from other schools that students aren't allowed to sell chocolate bars anymore. And this is, like, all under the new, like, nutrition standards that have been put in, and I'd like to speak about how that's kind of affecting the students and the programs. So, I've noticed with the special ed department, before the cookies were changed, a lot of students would buy them, and now, almost no student buys them. And I feel like that's gonna affect them very poorly. It's gonna affect their funding, and it's gonna affect the programs that they have to offer. And with that, I feel that with a lot of the other, like, changes, with the chocolate bars, it makes it very hard for students to fundraise for their programs. I know that you can still sell, like, to the public, and go house door-to-door, but a lot of the funding does come from the students within the school. And I feel that the nutrition changes kinda, can kinda get, like, I don't know, the students can just go to a gas station during lunch. So, these standards that are getting put in, I feel like we do need standards to have a more healthy student body, but I also feel that these standards are affecting more the programs that the school has than helping students, because instead of the students supporting programs by buying, you know, cookies or chocolate bars, they're just going to a gas station and getting them there instead. So, I kinda just wanted to bring that to your attention, just what, like, the student body is feeling through all these new changes this year.
Can you tell me, can students sell them after school, or is this during school they can't sell them, or is it any time?
For the chocolate bars?
Any, any of them.
Well, the cookies, they can still sell, but they changed them to a more healthy cookie, and...
So, they sell those during the day?
Yeah.
And then what about in the school store for DECA?
The school store, they still sell during lunch hours. They just had to change a lot of their products.
Okay.
But, well, like, they're still, I believe they're still doing well with their products.
The DECA, the school store?
Yeah, the school store.
But not the student group that's selling cookies?
Yeah, but the student, the special education and other student organizations, I can see that they're kinda, like, suffering a little. I believe with the next year to come, they're gonna suffer more.
Thank you.
Thanks.
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 All right, thanks, Philip. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to speak before the board? Seeing none, then we'll move on to approval of minutes, entertain that motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next is monitoring reports, and that'll be facilitated by Laura McCoy.
We're going to be having a report about continuous improvement overview.
So, this is a very, very brief, very high-level overview of some of the things we've been doing in our continuous improvement work. I look at it as a prelude to possible consideration by the board for a retreat that would allow time for deeper strategic planning. And I wanna say that this is the work of many people, even though I'm presenting, equally shared with Ms. Byer and many, many others on our team. So, as I mentioned, I'm here tonight to provide an update of our district continuous improvement, as well as a prelude to proposed board planning retreat. And initially, we had talked about the non-negotiables, and a lot of the work that we're presenting and sharing came out of the, both the strategic framework that was shared last November, as well as work around non-negotiables, and what is it that we're expecting of our building leaders, what is it that we're expecting of ourselves as district leaders related to our system of continuous improvement. So, several of the key documents that we have, I won't be going over them all in detail, 'cause they're all many, many pages and a lot to consider. The district strategic framework is meant as our five-year plan, our focus on where we're moving as a district, what is it that we're focusing on related to our four key priority areas. Then, we have district success and accountability plans. Those are annual plans that we have to make sure that the district as a whole is considering, within this year, what are the next steps in each of those areas moving forward, so that we can get greater differentiation based on what is the need in that year, how can we best support it. And then, we have our district success plans, which basically tie in, how are each of our departments working to support that overall district plan. Of course, we have our school success plans, which are individually, how are the schools moving forward, what are they focusing on, what are they measuring, what strategic actions are they taking to gain success, and then our system of continuous improvement calendar, which really creates a through-line of accountability and ties in what's happening at the school level, what's happening at, between the school and the executive director, what's happening at our meeting here at district office, we call it AEP, which is academic excellence, personalized pathways, and engagement, and then how are we presenting this and sharing with the board. So, those are the key documents. As I mentioned before, our strategic frameworks really focuses on what are we doing in the four priority areas. And again, we're flying through some of these just to, to present a, a high level overview, but you're gonna see in, in the end what, what we're suggesting related to possible retreat. And our success and accountability plans outline the strategic actions for the year. And they support our, how are we holding ourselves accountable? If we can agree on things that we find are most pressing for us as a district and what we think we want to focus on. How can we make sure that we're aligning with the board to make sure that it's inclusive of everything that the board is considering as well? Keeps us focused and accountable. And then, as I mentioned, we have a continuous improvement calendar. That's really to provide our timeline, our structures, our guidance for school, the district and the board of education as we implement our, our calendar. We're using this to monitor the actions, both at the school level, at the, at the district level and then sharing with you as a board for progress monitoring. So, the, it's not working, let me see, there we go. Sorry. Can you click on that for me if you don't mind? Thanks. And then if you could increase the size a little bit. So what this does is it creates a, a cycle of our progress monitoring reports. Thank you. So basically, as we, we mentioned in July, we would have an end of year review as well as a success planning retreat. This retreat would be focused on sharing our annual action plans and making sure that they're aligned with the board goals. As a, for instance, our area of, of engagement, we have a number of different initiatives that we focus on. And listening to the board, wellness is an important area of engagement that we want to make sure that we're, we're focusing on this year. So that has been included in our planning and we just want to make sure that we are hitting upon the things that the board would like to focus on most. Then in August, we start things off with educator effectiveness, an update on that. We are talking about, you know, how are we using the educator effectiveness system to provide feedback to our teachers? How are we using it systemically? And how do we look for patterns of success and opportunities to move forward more quickly as, as an organization? Rather than just using it as a checkoff list for evaluation, how are we doing as a system? We are proposing not having a progress monitoring report in September. Because September, the focus of the schools and as, as of the district should be really working on supporting the schools and getting the school year launched successfully. But then we would be sharing our school success plans that our schools are producing in October. Followed by every, the ESSA, every student achieves. Every stu-, I'm sorry, every student succeeds act, the efforts related to that would be shared in November. And then similar to what we've done in December, we'd have a state of the district where we'd be focusing on academic and behavioral MLSS. Multi-level systems of support as well as the state report card. January, we're moving into budget and staffing and charter school update. And February, we would be focusing on mid-year reports as well as in March. We would focus on our two priority areas in February and the other two in March. Again, we would have the results of our, our ESSA in April. And then we would be providing a charter school update in May as well as stoplight reports on how the schools are doing in June. So this, this creates a cycle, it's based similarly on some of the things that we're doing. And beyond this, beyond what you see for the board here, we have a variety of other calendarings. So that as the school is looking at their own data, they're sharing it up with their, their supervisor. The supervisors are sharing it collectively at the district level and then we're reporting it up to the board. So it's that, that up and down accountability piece that we have there. But really the critical pieces is the July from, from our standpoint in, in coming forward tonight. In asking, in asking if, if it would be of interest of the board to hold a retreat in July. Yes?
Thank you. I have a, I have a spot on, on my report, so we'll ask for it at that point in time if you're okay. I know we've talked a lot, but we will ask for July. And how much time are we thinking? A half a day are we thinking?
I would say a half day would be, we, we had talked about potentially some other items that might be addressed, so, so a half day I think would be in order. That really, and I've heard the board talk about making sure that we, that we all have our, our priorities and thoughts. As far as what strategic actions we want to take for the coming year. That would be an opportunity for some of that, that conversation as well.
Well, and I think as we move forward, we have, we're working on our scorecards and our, you know, as well. So I think that's a very critical part of this for through line accountability. And we need to have that in place as we kick off the new school year with our school success plans and so forth as well.
Can you give a brief description of the stoplight report for people that, that haven't heard it maybe?
Sure, so there are.
And for me as a reminder actually?
So we're looking at two, two main measures, one would be our stoplight report, but then also scorecards. So the stoplight report would be the main district measures that we're using for accountability within the, within the framework. So in our four different areas, we are measuring different, different factors. And it would be showing how well we're doing in STAR for instance, for, for our elementaries. And how well we're doing on ACT and other measures for, for the high school. That would be part of the academic excellence piece. Looking at engagement, we look at a variety of student surveys that focus on student wellness and, and personal safety. And then thriving workforce, we have measures related to retention and supporting our, our teachers and helping people feel that they're very successful. So that would be something that, that coming forward, we would be able to share. We've, we've shared it in, in various formats. And then the stop, the scorecard, basically it, it is a measure and a report on. The actual actions that we're taking and trying to get there on the big, big picture. And what I mean by that is the, this, the stoplight report is kinda, and, and what we focus on through the, through the framework. Really focuses on the end goals. But the scorecards are in getting to those end goals, what is it that we as a department are going to focus on? So let's just say we're focusing on recruiting and retaining an excellent diverse workforce. Maybe one of the measures is focusing on increasing diversity. And we want to make sure that in doing so, we have certain things that we're focusing on within our human resources department. And we can report out on how well we are doing in those areas.
So the fact that this is here in June, does that mean next month we'll have us, our first spotlight report?
So what we're, what we were hoping to do is, is have this cycle start so that in July. We're able to, to move forward with, with the reports for the coming year. But there may be things that we could, could share related to an end of year summary, but that would fall within the July retreat.
But we could have a baseline stoplight report maybe in June, just to sort of establish what we're, where we're headed?
Sure.
If I could, John, I know that teaching and learning has been working with Dr. Stramp to have stoplight reports. Through all of our schools, giving each, and they've, they've come out, I know I had the opportunity to go to McCullough with Terry. And Kelly Rollins to talk through their stoplight report and Dr. Stramp. And what that does is really affords mid-year check-ins to see what progress they're making. It's a progress monitoring tool. I think one of the things that John and the team have, and I think they, you might have mentioned it in the update. Really thinking about what is the tool and, and do we have the right tool to be able to give teachers?
Right.
That formative information just in time so that you can progress monitor throughout the course of the year. So I know that the team's been working tirelessly on that and looking to make sure that we are able to. Teachers are able to work in partnership with their principals and with their executive directors to make sure they have just in time data. So they can do mid-course, you know, course adjustments as they go throughout the process of the school year.
Right, so we have put out a request for proposals and we're reviewing possible vendors of, of different products that create a data visualization tool for us. Because we've created a hunger around data. How are we going deep with our data with, with student, student success at the building level? And this would allow teachers and building leaders as well as district leaders to go quickly and go deep into. Exploring hypotheses and looking at where, where are the greatest challenges? For instance, we could dig more deeply and more quickly into, say a school was struggling with behavior. Exactly what time of day is the most challenging? Exactly what area of the school are we seeing the most behavior? What types of behavior are we seeing? Which students are, are having those behavioral issues? That would be a behavioral focus, but we can do the same with academics and we can look at comparing multiple variables. If our students are having excessive absence, how are they, how are they doing related to their math literacy, math and literacy scores? Looking at multiple variables so that we're addressing problems more deeply rather than just superficially trying to find results. So we'll be looking at those. Actually, we have a team of people, people examining some of the, the possible products that we might bring forward for consideration. We're, we're meeting with our group on Wednesday, so should be an interesting time and look forward to sharing more.
Can you speak a little bit more to what this RFP, you said it's a product to, can you talk a little bit more about that?
So, right, there, there are a variety of different products that, that can be used for looking at student data. And in general, the, some of the products that are out there, the ones that, what we're looking for is something that can be easily used by teachers. So that they're not spending time calculating scores of assessments for their students. They're not spending time really doing the actual math work behind the, the digging into the data. That it can be looked at very easily by teachers and by the schools.
It's like software? Okay. Thanks.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the mouse problems too. There's a mouse out of control.
Alright, you're done?
I'm done.
Alright, and next is our superintendent's update and I'll turn that over to Dr. Langfield.
First item I have is the calendar. We are coming up on some really critically important opportunities to celebrate. Retirement recognition ceremony for our staff retiring this year is on May twenty-second at Riverside Ballroom. Also the school time stat, task force, I'm understanding that was postponed and they're not gonna carry it. Okay, I'm getting the nod, so I see that on the calendar, but that's not gonna happen. So people can go to the retirement. May twenty-third, we have the ICSC meeting with our board at seven AM. May twenty-seventh, the district is closed, that is in recognition of Memorial Day. And then the graduations begin. May thirtieth is the Dr. Rosa Monocahill graduation at six o'clock at East High School. June second, we have three graduations, beginning with East High School at twelve o'clock. Southwest High School at three thirty and West High School at seven PM. All at the Crest Event Center and I'm sure those are posted online. And then our board meeting is the following Monday. So June second is a Sunday with the three graduations. June third, we have the teaching and learning work session meeting beginning at six o'clock here in the boards room. And then immediately following is the organizational support work session meeting as well. June fifth, there is another school time, school start times task force. And that's at CSU seven for that team that's been working on that critical issue. June fifth, we also have the Preble High School graduation ceremony at the Rush Center at seven PM. June sixth, we have the John Dewey Academy of Learning graduation to celebrate at five PM at Backstage in the Meyer Theater. June seventeenth is our regular board meeting here at six PM in the district office. And June nineteenth, once again, we have a school start times task force at CSU seven. So a lot on the calendar this, this month to celebrate between now and June. So I'll put that out there and then I know that the next item, I'm gonna turn over to you, Dr. Warren.
So, um, the board members got the calendar timeline of the superintendent search process that we used in two thousand and eleven. Eric has offered to be the coordinator of the process. Terms of communicating with Sandy and search firms and, and all of that kind of stuff that's going to happen. So I'm gonna turn it over to him just to talk, a high level on, on, just to give ourselves a sense of where we're headed into, into the search process.
Sure, so, you know, I, I think the, the greatest decision we have as a school board is, is to select the, the leader of the district. Eight years ago, we went through this, or the, the board went through this process and, and brought Michelle on. And I, I think we can see the fruits of the labor and how important it is to, to make this decision and the direction that it sets for our district. So what I would propose is that at the, the first meeting in June, I think it's June fourth. I, I would provide a, a proposed timeline of what, June third? Thank you. Provide, provide a proposed timeline of how, based upon what we did last time and maybe some other suggestions to get board members reactions to. I certainly am not going to take over this process, but want to make sure that we're bringing all of us together, that we engage each of the board members. And certainly engage all of our different staff groups and the community as well. And make sure that all voices are heard and that we know exactly what we need as a district and where we want to go and hopefully able to select another great leader. So if we can wait till June third, have some things for people to react to and then we'll kind of go from there. That's sort of where I'm at right now. If anybody has any specific questions or sort of anything else around that process or any other feedback, I'd be open to it, but that's kind of where we're at.
So you mentioned all voices are heard, so I appreciate that. But what do you see as all voices or who do you see as the voices that should be heard?
Yes, I mean, I think that's something that, that I would want the board to, to provide feedback on. I mean, certainly, like I mentioned, all of our employee groups, different minority groups and leadership organizations, nonprofits, the, the business community. Other elected officials and boards, really the, the list could be endless. I would want members of this board to help me. Looking into the process, it seems like the search firm often does a lot of that work, but what I would propose is that as a board, we do some of that too. I, I think it could either be concurrently with the search group or we could do a lot of that proactively on our own. Leading into providing information to the search firm. In fact, I would recommend that we do both of those things. But in terms of community outreach groups, I, I would want all of us to provide feedback and information. And I would rather err on the side of reaching out to too many people than not enough.
And do you see, asking them to come to us with how they're feeling or do you see us going to them?
Yeah, I would see us going to them. So, you know, one of the ideas that I had would be, you know, our, our communities, the Green Bay City Council, Alaway, Bellevue Village Boards. Going to them as much as possible. And then, yeah, as much as we can go into the community to interact with people and hear their feedback, I think would be helpful. I also think there's a lot to be said for some of, as board members doing some of this work and connecting with our community. You know, a search firm is gonna do it too, but there's something to be said for, for us getting out and doing some of that work too. So I want to have more discussion around what that looks like. And certainly there'll be different comfort levels and time commitments that people want to make. But I, I definitely don't want to leave any stone unturned or for someone to be able to say, well, I wish someone would have asked me or I wish I could have given my feedback. That would defeat the process, so.
Can we also include parent groups in that conversation?
Absolutely.
Or I guess, is that what you're picturing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what we've done in the past.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to note it.
And again, I, I'm not, I don't claim to have all of the best ideas. I want, you know, everyone else to be able to contribute to the process and make sure that, that we do it right. Because again, we, it's not something that you do very often if you do it the right way. And so I want to make sure we do it the right way.
I think it's great.
So June third, I'll have some documents for people to react to.
Alright, thanks Eric. Next we have to schedule, did we say something?
Just gonna talk about the retreats?
Oh, alright, go ahead.
I don't know if you have retreats too. So the two, the two retreats I want to talk about, Dr. Warren, and I don't know if there are others. One of the things that obviously John was speaking about was the, the framing of the strategic framework and scorecards. And continuous improvement and that bringing everyone up to speed on where we're at and making sure we're aligned exactly with where the board wants and needs us to go. So that would be one part of the retreat. The other part really focuses in. The other part really focuses in on the whole... The results, as you well know, and it's probably... I can hand this off to you, the redesigned 2020 and the results of the survey today that came in. And it was just announced out, so I know we have a lot of interest in that. And we'd like to talk about setting up a time to sit down with the board and review the big ideas and the results of the survey and then start to, just as Eric is going to bring some things back for people to react to, to take what we see and bring some... Start having that conversation with the board and looking and seeking your direction as to what needs a deeper dive and look and how... And then thinking about that and then how do we start going out and getting community feedback on those particular pieces? So that's where you were headed, so I apologize if I stepped on it.
No, it's all right. I was moving ahead to the scheduling part.
Oh, okay.
So we were talking about scheduling. Andrew and I were talking about this last week. We have a fair number of things we're trying to add into our schedule for the summer. One of the options we could take... We could use is if board members were able to clear out a day in their schedule. We do have budgeted money to pay stipends for board members when they spend an entire day to offset the loss of work time. So we could do that. But if we scheduled in a full day, we could cover the two retreats that Dr. Langenfeld just mentioned and get those done rather than trying to do those, you know, night... In the evening. So I don't know what people think or if that's a possibility. But that was just an idea we had to get this done a little bit more efficiently.
I'm open to that.
I'm open to it. I would have to be probably at least into the second weekend of June to provide some notice.
Okay. Well, I think you're talking about doing it in July.
We're talking in July.
Yeah. And I know we had... We looked at our dates last week when we met. I don't know if anybody has those handy. I didn't... I didn't print them. I just have them in an email. Anyway, I know we had dates in the evening that we were available. There were a couple of weeks that some of us were completely out of town.
Can I just ask?
What are we considering here?
The two retreats that Dr. Langenfeld just did. We're considering taking a day. So like 8 to 4 and covering both of those retreats during that day.
Okay.
And then board members, when we spend a day that's extra besides our regular meetings, there's a stipend of $100 that we can take. And so I don't know if that's doable for you at all or...
It, you know, my schedule's pretty fluid, so...
Yeah.
If it works, yeah.
Okay.
I just might not know that until...
Okay.
Sorry, that's the nature of my life.
Does anybody have those dates I sent? Let me see. Oh, here, I'll check.
I'm looking.
For me. It was May 13th. I don't know why I can't find... Oh, here we go. All right, so in July, at least, these are days that were all in town. So 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th.
What was the date of the email?
13th. So we were all in town, the 8th, 9th, 10th, 11th, 29th, 30th, and 31st. So do any of those...
That's in July?
That's July. Oh, 1st too, but that's probably not anybody's favorite day.
What about the 10th?
Wednesdays, those dates were for evenings.
Yeah, but I mean, we're in town.
We're in town, but Wednesdays will not work for me.
Okay.
The 10th is a Wednesday.
So and... Can you do Tuesdays or Thursdays?
I can make that work.
You can make it work? Okay. All right, so we just need to avoid...
Thursday would be better for me than a Wednesday.
Okay, so the 11th?
Sure.
All right. All right, we'll have to check with Christina. Does that work over there? Does the 11th work? I'll make that work if I can.
I'm seeing a lot of...
All right, so why don't we... Why don't we set it for the 11th then? July 11th. I don't know, 8:30? Does that work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. And then hopefully Christina will be able to do that.
And Sandy will send something else. All right. That was easy.
All right.
Doesn't always work this way. Okay. And then I have a couple of success stories. As we were talking and I heard the mention of IB, I know that the featured story in the Community Connections going to all households this month in how soon, Lori? Couple of weeks?
Yeah, after Memorial.
It's a pretty... It's a pretty awesome story and that's the feature on the front cover for every community household in our community. So I reviewed that today.
What's the feature?
International Baccalaureate. And I know that I'm mentioning it too because we had guests from the State Department come and visit over in that program as well. They went to West and they went to Chapel. And they were very, very impressed. This gentleman was very impressed and will be coming back to work with us around international and met with the mayor and met with Tammy Baldwin's representative, Jen Gardner, so... But the other... The other success story I wanted to talk about, I had the opportunity on Saturday, and I know, Dr. Warren, you were there as well, to celebrate a pretty awesome thing. Our students were performing on the stage at the PAC. We had representation from all of our high schools on stage. We saw three pieces from the three different musicals from Preble High School. They did Newsies. East High School did Billy Elliot. And Southwest High School did Footloose. And then one of the best supporting actors was from West High School and she performed as well. And then Jamie I saw on stage, so it was pretty cool. But at the end of this opportunity, they... We had many, many, many students participating in this particular programs. I think our theater and music departments do an extraordinary job supporting our students in that effort. And then at the end of the evening, they select a young man and a young lady, actor, actress, to represent the state of Wisconsin in New York City on a Broadway stage. And very pleased this year that one of our students, Matthew Watier, from Southwest High School, will be on Broadway this spring or this summer. So it was an exciting night. And I have to do a shout out to our teachers and our staff who are there as well, who work so tirelessly on behalf of children to make this a possibility. I think about the teachers who... Who we just heard from one this evening, talking about going above and beyond because that's what they do. And it's such a gift to our kids and our families. So I sincerely appreciate that as well. So lots of wonderful things and we'll see more success as we come. But nice job, Jamie. You made me cry. So I was teary-eyed, so thank you. Okay. That's it.
All right, and next, entertain the next motion under Board Facilitation Services.
I move that the board contract with Top Facilitation Services and Beverly Scow for facilitation services not to exceed $1,000. And Howick and Associates and Drew Howick for facilitation services not to exceed $5,000 as presented, be approved.
We had a discussion about this last week. I did... Well, let's take the vote and then I'll give a follow-up. Rhonda?
Is there any way that we can divide the question? So it's not two facilitators, two different prices in one motion? So can I... I move to amend to divide the question?
You're moving to divide the question?
Yes.
Into...
Two motions.
Two motions. Because, I mean, they're not the same... It's not the same contract. It's not the same facilitator. It's not the same price, just to...
So you're saying that the first motion would end at $1,000 at the period and the second motion would begin that the board contracted with and then Howick and Associates, no other changes?
Right.
Okay. All right. We'll take a vote on whether we want...
No, I'll second that.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
I need to second.
We'll take a vote on amending as recommended.
Becker?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney? Banden?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
All right, so then we... We'll take a vote on each of those amendments. And then what do we... Okay, and then we... We'll have to take a final vote.
No, because this is an amendment. So we just voted to divide. So now there are two motions.
Two motions, okay.
So I move that the board...
You know, which you don't have to even do that. Because that already happened. Yep, so it's just... Yep.
Vote twice. Once for the...
So are... So are we... But we're voting to split the question and then we'll have to vote?
We did that. So it is... So a motion was made.
Okay.
It's split. Now there's two motions, but we have to do one first and then the other.
Yeah, okay. So now we're voting on motion number one.
And we don't need a... A move? No.
No, because that already happened. It just got split into two.
Warren?
Okay, so we're voting on the Top Facilitation Services first. Okay. Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Wait, stop. Can we state what we're voting on? Can we include the actual motion and the price as well? Just for the record?
We just did.
No, but it's separate now.
For clarification, I will read them one at a time. I move that the board contract with Top Facilitation Services and Beverly Scow for facilitation services not to exceed $1,000. Thank you. That's the first vote.
All right, Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Banden?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
I move that the board contract with Howick and Associates and Drew Howick for facilitation services not to exceed $5,000 as presented.
Is there a second? Oh, that's right, we already...
This is just for clarification.
This is just for clarification. All right, Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Banden?
Aye.
Sitnikov?
No.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried 5-1. All right, I did talk with Beverly just to make sure we got her on our calendar if this went through. And she is available on June 10th. And I don't know that we... When we talked last week, that was one of the dates all of us were available. And I think, Andrew, you're probably... What time can you start?
Because we had already had a board retreat scheduled for that date. At 6:00. So that's... We knew we were all available.
Right. We didn't have a... We had it on hold.
Right.
Yeah.
Tentatively scheduled.
Right. So she is available the 10th and so we'll put that on the calendar. I haven't been able to connect with her regarding... She mentioned during the interview having some one-on-one or one-on-two conversations with board members. She was out of town in Minneapolis. I think she's in Denver this week, as I recall. So that... But that'll be very flexible timing if we do that. But the 10th, Andrew, what time do you want to set that for? 5:30?
5:30.
5:30, is that safe? Okay. So Sandy, if you can put that on our calendars for 5:30 on July 10th or June 10th. Thank you.
And that's for Scow?
That's for, yes. That's for Top Facilitation, yeah. And then I'll let you know, work with Drew and the dates that we had already on our calendar and let you know those. All right. Next, we have no legal department update. Next is InterCity Student Council report. Turn that over to Jamie. And Phillip?
So, hi. I'm Jamie. Everyone knows me. This is Phillip. He's here with me tonight. So there's a lot of exciting things going on in the schools as they wrap up the year. Starting with West, our international baccalaureate testing is finishing up. We have Spanish tomorrow and Wednesday and then French Thursday and Friday and then we're finished. So everyone's very excited to be done with that because it's been three weeks of testing. Our graduation is June 2nd at 7:00 p.m. We have our senior honors night tomorrow night at, I think, 6:00 o'clock. And then June 1st at 9:00 a.m., we have our IB celebration at West High. We also had several students participate in the Goody Triathlon where they buddied with members of our ID program to participate in that with them and that was very successful. And we had one of our students, Olivia Vandemplas, was nominated for outstanding ensemble or outstanding supporting actress for our musical Avenue Q. And then Phillip, do you want to talk about one of your schools?
All right. So one of the schools I'll talk about is Preble. So Preble had their academic decathlon team. They went to Nationals in Bloomington, Minnesota. And at there, they had two members of the team. One took a golden speech and another took a silver in speech. And that was pretty cool because they were the first and second best people nationally. So we're really proud of that. We have track regionals today at Preble. And right now, last I heard, there's the girls' four-by-eight that will be going on. I believe the guys' four-by-eight. And there's probably a couple more. And sectionals, I believe, is this Thursday. I don't know where it is at though. They were at the Music Awards and their musical Newsies was given an award. I don't remember what award it was. But a lot of the students that were in the musical were really proud about it. We had some students went to DECA Nationals. And I don't believe any placed. I believe one student went to like the semifinals and they were there a couple of weeks ago. We just finished up AP testing. So last week and the week before, many students were doing AP tests. And we finished that up on Friday. Also on Friday, there was the senior ball. So a lot of the seniors enjoyed their last dance. And Thursday, we had the fall... I mean, the spring cookout. So we had like the... We usually have like inflatable that's outside, but we had to bring it inside because it was raining. So it was like in the middle of the hallway. That's pretty funny. Seniors are excited to finish up. They only have two more weeks, so they're all make sure to brag about it to me. And we're preparing for a blood drive for Thursday. And a lot of the spring sports are starting to close down and get to the regionals and the playoffs this state.
Next, I'm going to talk about East. So they had their 27th annual fishing derby at the East River. So they invite students to come fish at the East River and have a competition for the biggest and the smallest fish. Their golf season finished up and they also participated in the Center Stage Awards. I know they were nominated for Best Supporting Actor. I think Outstanding Ensemble and Outstanding Overall Production. Do you want to talk about Southwest?
Yeah. So Southwest, they had their NHS ceremony, induction ceremony. Yeah, so Southwest, they had their NHS ceremony, induction ceremony, I believe that was last week. Their track and field is ending. They had a couple runners at conference that did pretty well. They have softball and baseball, their seasons are coming to an end. And as Ms. Wangenfield mentioned, there's a student, Matt Walter.
Watier.
Watier. He'll be going to New York City to represent the Center Stage at the Music Awards. They had the Asian Club Awareness Week, I think that was last week. And they had a seniors' art show. Oh, so they had AP testing. And I'm sure the seniors there are proud to only have two more weeks.
All right. And then for ICSC, we had our final meeting of the year, May fifth. And we had our elections. So next year's president will be Luke Pisani. The vice president will be Hannah Van Pei, and the secretary treasurer will be Noah Becker. We have our quarterly meeting this Thursday. We have several items that we're going to address. It's our like wrap-up meeting, so we kind of bring everything from the year just to wrap up and see where it's leading for next year's ICSC. So we will be talking about a trimester's update from East, the N.E.W. School of Innovation, a math update, dress codes update, weighted grades and NHS requirements, the seven-thirty meeting time, or a possibility of a seven-thirty meeting time for our quarterly meetings, and then our senior send-off. And so that's all from ICSC.
All right, thank you, Jamie. All right, then district events? If anybody has anything. Oh, did I miss something? Oh, I missed you, I'm sorry. I'll take it personally.
All right, for the legislative report, there are two items. Passing around a letter. Just to recap on the Joint Finance Committee hearing, that was a long time ago already, at least it feels that way. But I just wanted to say it took place on April twenty-fourth at UWGB. A number of us attended and gave our testimony on behalf of the district. There was an enormous amount of very heartfelt testimony. I didn't stay all day, but just, I was there several hours at least, and it was pretty riveting, actually. And public education funding was clearly the most prevalent issue. I felt pretty good about our representation there. And that kind of leads to the next subject, which is the state budget update. The Joint Committee on Finance will be voting on the K-12 education portion of the state budget this Thursday, May twenty-third. They will be working from budget papers that are provided by the Legislative Fiscal Bureau, which is nonpartisan. If you want to have a look at those papers, you can get them, you can, there are links on the WASB website under the legislative update. Or you can go directly to the Legislative Fiscal Bureau website. They, you know, the subjects are anything to do with education, special ed aides, mental health programs, transportation, et cetera. And just to kind of throw a last-minute variable into this, last Thursday, the Legislative Fiscal Bureau updated its revenue estimates for the 2017-19 budget and stated that they expect the balance to be three hundred and twelve point two million dollars higher than previously estimated. This is mostly one-time revenue, and the Republicans are showing no significant interest in spending any of that on education. So in order to remind our legislators one more time about our district's priorities, Lori Blakesley has drafted a letter to, which you have before you, to be sent to both legislators and members of the Joint Finance Committee, which enumerate our, some of our priorities. And we would like to have members of the school board sign the letter so it can be distributed.
Right now, it just says my name, or we wanting the whole board to...
Typically have just done the way, you can do it either way.
Yeah, either ways.
We knew Christina wasn't going to be here.
Okay.
So that was a...
I'm sorry, I wrote, I kind of wrote that little synopsis before I understood. So...
If the board, yeah, if the board's okay.
We've got to approve this.
We want the board approval to that.
I think if I could just offer. The items here are critically important, and if we can get resource in any of these areas, they can offset other areas of interest to us. I think that, as we talk about, you know, one of the things you don't see on here is transportation. But we anticipate that we would have additional resource to be able to support transportation in a different way. These are the key areas that came out of the Blue Ribbon Commission, and these are the ones that we testified on. And I know Christina had done the transportation, but as we talk through it, transportation is not, besides the sparsity aid and the transportation in rurals, that's not even in the realm right now of these legislators. And so that's why you don't see it on here. We could certainly add it, but I don't know that, it hasn't been a priority in terms of the legislators. So, for example, if we can support funding for high-poverty school districts and receive additional support there, one of the pieces we would want to tackle, I would assume, is transportation. Same holds true for additional, if we don't have to transfer more than thirty million dollars into one fund to support our special education needs, we could transfer it there. So there's resource there that could support that issue and that concern. And then obviously, mental health funding.
Is there any discussion about the letter?
I certainly agree with everything on the letter.
Yes.
Okay. Is that a consensus? It sounds like it.
All right.
That completes my report, I have nothing further.
All right.
Go ahead.
All right, just follow up. I know that sometimes you have an opportunity to speak to our legislators. If you're out and about, feel free. They're taking the vote on Wednesday, Thursday?
Thursday.
Joint Finance.
Thursday, is what you said. So if you see these folks or you know them, I mean, I think it's always good to do, or reach out. I probably will call them all as well. And then call some key members of the Joint Finance and just say, "This is coming, and please consider it for our kids." But obviously, the more people can talk to them, the better. Understand that we're here, and our kids are, have needs, and our teachers deserve the resources to teach the best way they know how.
All right, thanks, Laura. Okay, now we have district events. Is there anything anyone would like to, we've talked a lot about things going on. I do know that it conflicts with Manoka's graduation, but John Dewey has their senior capstones, and those are always very interesting to attend. I think I've attended those many years in a row. But it's their, the seniors' year-long project, basically, that they've done, and those are always fun to see.
I'm sorry to be missing it, we're not at the Manoka graduation.
Yeah, and I have something else that's not Manoka, but I'm going to try to get there for the first hour at least. Anything else? All right, and then board member school visits? Does anybody have, I don't know what I did with my list.
I'll go first, because mine's quick. I had a lot going on outside of board work. But I did get to go to Franklin to see the community IB projects, and that was really great, to see the students really getting into explaining how their projects were working. And so I enjoyed that very much. And aside from that, I spent a lot of time in person with parents and teachers in meetings and on the phone as well. And that was the only school that I got to, but I had a lot of conversation with our families and some of our staff.
I went to the Jefferson Adopters Breakfast, that's always a great event. The Preble Music Concert at the Meyer Theater, that was impressive. The East FFA banquet. I went to Washington, visited, chatted with some, several teachers. Went to the Equity Awards at East High School, which was impressive as well. And then I was able to get to Earthstock at West, and that was really neat to see the greenhouse. And Alona gave us a tour. And then went to the Safe Walk and Bike presentation at the library. That was well done.
Yeah, I've been mentoring at Chapel for their IB, the fifth graders do a project, it's kind of like the prelude to the Franklin and West projects. So that's been fun. It's the third year I've done this. I went, I was, participated in helping kids with their essays in Mrs. Pamper's class at Edison. Went to see Clu at East, which was very entertaining. Baird Family Literacy Night, which was a really nice evening. I did visit West Greenhouse and was able to purchase two good planters, and now I'll try to keep them alive. And then also the Safe Rides, Walk and Ride, or Safe Bike and Walk to School presentation, which was very interesting. Lots of good ideas for how to make it safer for our kids and families to get to school, and actually get around the community in general.
I've also been participating in the mentoring at Chapel for the second year. My group is working on sleep, the issue of sleep, sleep health, yep. And I went to the Jefferson Adopters Breakfast. That's a terrific event. I also toured BayLink Manufacturing with Congressman Gallagher and a group of people. That was, I hadn't been there, and that was, that was really cool. I went to the Pancake Breakfast at Langley, which was super fun. Lots of flipping of pancakes, and some people were better than others at catching them on their plate. We won't mention any names. The Eric Show at Aldo, that was terrific. I bought a pot, sitting on my kitchen, that was great. Let's see, one of the really interesting things I did is I went to Beaumont and I attended a professional development for teachers around trauma-informed care. And the pod that they were working on that night was care for the caregiver. Learned a lot, and I was really glad I went to that. Let's see, Gifted and Talented Presentation at DOB for Parents, I learned a lot there as well. These are like little seminars that our staff does that I, that touch on things that I need to know more of, so I really appreciate that. I went to a concert at Howe, May first. And I also went to a presentation done by staff at Webster about cyber, let's see, keeping children safe in cyberspace. So there are parents and staff talking about all kinds of elements around keeping children safe online. Learned a ton there. And then I also went to the Safe Walk and Bike presentation at the library.
I went to Edison Middle School. Got to go into a classroom and see some student presentations, as well as tour the new facility, the new space, which is really great. I went to Red Smith, which was both, for a personal reason, that's where my son will go next year, so it was exciting to go and see the classroom that he'll be in. And great to go out there and spend time with Willie. I went to Green Bay West, the Title VI Indian Education Meeting they had. Really, really fascinating to go and hear from, hear some needs and what we're doing as a district around Title VI. I took a tour of Sullivan and Chapel with the principals there. I went to the Superintendent's Art Reception, which was here last week. Just fascinating, I didn't know if it was legal, but I took some pictures of some of the artwork because I had to show other people about some of the things that were taking place. And then finally, last Friday, I went to Lombardi and got to see the STEM work that's happening over there. And walked into a welding classroom that was probably fifty percent female, fifty percent male welding rebar. There was an advanced student who was working on a project. It just blew me away and was really, really inspiring, so. A lot of good visits. It's quickly becoming my favorite part of being a board member, Vicki. My favorite part of being a board member is being able to... A new favorite, it changes every meeting. But being able to go in and spend time in schools, I really, really enjoy that.
And I'm, I've had a couple busy weeks with work lately, but I'm looking forward to catching up on visiting all the schools in the last few days of the year. I go around and catch up on any schools that I missed, and I also enjoyed the Franklin concert last week, too.
Yeah, go ahead. Cycle around again?
Round two?
Sorry, because I forgot. I also went to Earthstock and the Franklin Concert, as well as visited Edison in Miss Pamper's class as well. So I don't know, I was looking at my time smaller.
Yeah.
So, just so you know.
And I actually went to Edison to visit the class, and there was a sub. So I said I will come back when she's there. And now we're finished.
All right, now we're done, everybody done? Okay. Now we'll get to our system reports. First is teaching and learning, that'll be facilitated by Katie Maloney.
Thank you, Brenda. I move that the shared services agreement by and between Green Bay Area Public School District and City of Green Bay for resource officers, school and community as presented, be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
What's that?
I'm going to vote yes on this, this contract, because I think it represents, I really appreciate the work that's gone into this contract addressing, you know, addressing the needs of the district. There are places I'd like to, I would like to have seen us maybe go farther in setting the terms, but we do have a significant presence on the hiring committees for new resource officers. I do feel that since we're paying for the whole program, I would prefer to see even more operational control over that program. But I think we got a lot of important things written down, and I'm comfortable voting, voting yes on. I appreciate the work that went into this contract.
Rhonda? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, you know, it is you.
Go ahead.
I just have, I just want to make a couple, I guess, comments, and they relate to the survey that was given out to staff and parents about SRO program, which we know the reason that happened is because these are the people that are supposed to benefit the most from the program. I was able to go in and review some comments on that survey, which, you know, we understand when there are surveys, people write comments typically because their questions or concerns are not necessarily being mentioned in the, in the questions, right? That's why people typically comment. So I thought it was important to hear from the people that this program is supposed to serve the most. So I did go in, spent about an hour and a half looking at these comments, and relating to the contract, I just want to mention this, and I'm not sure what the plan is or how this works, but part of the, you know, it's even in the policy, part of what we're expecting out of having the law enforcement presence in the schools is that we're supposed to have some sort of presentation happening with regards to, you know, there's various things with the, you know, human trafficking, online safety awareness, which I think is important. But a lot of the comments actually related to that these presentations aren't happening, and that they're not visible in the classroom, as well as they might have a presentation scheduled, then they cancel it and they don't come back to fulfill that part of the contract. And it's in the contract that we do have that as an expectation. So moving forward, I think it's important that, you know, if we're going to talk about building relationships, you know, we sell this program and having loss and... you know, we sell this program and having law enforcement in our schools as building relationships, as well as, you know, safety, we need to make sure that this is happening. I would wonder, and I'm curious, if we have some sort of schedule for presentations to have some sort of accountability and some oversight on, on when this is going to happen? Because there was a lot of comments related to that. If we want these presentations to happen, and they should, and I think that students would benefit from that, I think it's important that we actually, we make sure that they're going to happen. And how does that work? Which, I'm not sure what's in place now. But you have it scheduled. And if it doesn't happen, what's the reason? And when are you coming back? And as far as are you, are you getting that done? And, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that, and it wasn't clear, I did ask the question, but it wasn't clear if their supervisor is actually seeing those comments related to that? Because I think that's important as well. So looking at the contract, and like Andrew said, we are footing this entire bill. Okay? So we, I think with money comes with expectation. And I believe after that is accountability. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to have an improvement on that part of the, of the contract and the expectation from the SRO, that they're actually going to be, you know, there'll be less comments about that next time. But I was very, very happy to be able to see those comments. I cannot imagine voting on this contract without doing that.
Thank you. I appreciate the fact that Vicki has been working and setting up. We have meetings monthly now with the law enforcement and with the SRO leadership. So I think this is a really important time. I saw her nodding through this process. I'm very confident that is the intent and to work to really ensure that, that the contract is followed. I know that Melissa Theo Coller and Chris Coller and the team worked tirelessly on that to make sure that we have the very best for our students as well. So, and a special thanks to Gwen Stramp for making the comments available so that board members could, could spend time and look at them and really understand and review what the community had to say as well. So thank you for that.
All right, Sandy?
McCoy? Aye. Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney Powell?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Student Interviews with Non-School Personnel Policy 445 and Procedures for Non-School Personnel Interviews of Students During the School Day Rule 445R is presented, be approved.
Second?
I don't, but Rhonda just muttered discussion and, there we go.
Actually, point of clarification. And I'm, I don't know if there's anyone here to speak to this, but we stopped actually asking people if they want to speak to items. Is there a reason?
Well, I announced in the beginning that if people want to speak-
But that we don't do that before? We're not doing that anymore before?
No, because we decided when we have public comment that we would have our discussion first and then open it up to anyone who would like to make a comment.
But I haven't heard you say that tonight.
I said tonight, if, if you want to speak for the public comment, to let Sandy know and, and fill out a form. And then, and then she'll know to tell us that there's someone who would like to speak.
But it's entirely possible that during our conversation, someone might come up with something and then they may not have done that?
Right, that's what I said. If, if at any point you have a comment you'd like to make, just let Sandy know.
So they would have to come and tell her? And then they could speak?
You can fill out the form after you speak.
After you speak?
You can, yeah. So that, so if they find they want to speak and don't have time to fill out the form, they can still let Sandy know.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Do you still have something you want?
I do.
Okay.
I just have to find it because it timed out, I mean.
You want mine?
No, just, it's coming. It just timed out. Okay, I guess I just have a general question and is wondering if this is in statute or not. So if administration is looking to have an officer talk to a student, that can happen without parents or guardians or any family member or in, in play, right? That can happen? I just want to be clear. I'm not totally clear on that. And, and why?
Just to clarify, you're looking to determine if an administrator can request an officer speak to a student without parent-
Right.
Context.
And why?
Are you in a specific place in the policy, Rhonda?
Um, I just wrote it down in my notes.
Oh, okay.
Right. It's a general question.
So if you look at the policy, I'm sorry, the Rule 445 Rule, and you look at Section D1, General Requirements. I'm looking for the language on parent. And then 1E, Reasonable and Appropriate Attempts Shall Be Made to Notify the Parent or the Guardian of Any Student Who Is Interviewed by Law Enforcement Official on School Premises During the School Day. So it does not differentiate, so then if you look at Section 2 and then Section 3, those are differentiated by whether they are at the request of administration and then interview is not school-related. This section applies to both of those. So parents would be notified whether it's at the request of an administrator or whether the interview is regarding something that is not school-related.
And the interview can continue if the parents weren't able to be contacted? And is there, oh, like a policy, a state law? Is there anything related to why that can, can still happen, even if they can't reach the parent?
Yep, the Attorney General has advised. And, and the Attorney General's Safe Schools Manual indicates interviews of students can continue without parent permission is not needed for student interviews.
Okay. And what about if a parent requests that their child not be interviewed in school? That it happened actually outside of school? Do we honor that or how does that work?
That a student not be interviewed in school?
Yes. If there was ever a situation where the student may be questioned or whatever is going on at school, that the parent didn't want that to happen at school, do they have the right to say that and request that that interview be taken? Or have that taken place outside of school?
We haven't received that request. The police officer always has the right to take the student to the law enforcement agency to conduct the interview.
Right.
We haven't received that request.
No. But if we did, what, what would that be like?
Well, we could tell law enforcement that they need to take the student down to the agency to conduct the interview.
So if a parent has that in writing, then, then they would have to do that. It wouldn't happen at school.
You're saying a parent would proactively have that in writing?
Right.
I, I don't know how that, we would tell law enforcement the parent wishes the interview to be conducted off premises. We certainly can tell-
So that would be possible?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Anything else, Rhonda?
Nope.
Okay, anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sidney Powell?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Butts? Carried six zero.
I move that the Police School Resource Officer Program Policy 882.1 is presented, be approved.
Second?
Any comments? Comments?
No.
No? Okay. Drust it. Sandy?
Warren?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Sidney Powell?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Police School Resource Officer Program Rule 882.1R be repealed.
Second?
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Sidney Powell?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Chemistry Resources $88,452 is presented, be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
McCoy? Aye. Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney Powell?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the International Baccalaureate IB Diploma Program DP Math and IBDP Business Management Resources $10,100 is presented, be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Sidney Powell?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the Proposed Course Essential Documents for Personalize Your Path Exploratory Course, $3,636 is presented, be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney? Aye.
Sidney Powell?
Aye. Carried six zero.
I move that the Grade Promotion Retention Acceleration Policy 345.4, Grade Promotion Procedures Rule 345.4R-PREN-1 and Grade Acceleration Procedures Rule 345.4R-PREN-2 is presented, be approved.
Second?
Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Sidney Powell?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
And that concludes the Teaching and Learning Report.
All right, thanks, Katie. Next is Organizational Support. That'll be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
So under Business and Finance, I will move that the Model 3 4K per pupil allocation be increased from $2,300 to $2,500 per student, as presented, be approved.
Second?
Discussion?
Okay. So can we, can we state where this money's coming out of? It's from next year's budget? Is that where this is coming from? Okay. Okay. And, I mean, I'm obviously excited to hear that we would be, we would be increasing the enrollment funding. But I think for everyone, you know, for clarity, this money then goes to Encompass, YWCA, Peace Nursery, and the Oak School, the Wildlife Sanctuary. Once we, sorry, Y, it says YWCA.
That's YMCA.
Thank you. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, YW was-
Okay.
Switched the last.
Okay. All right, no, it's fine.
Carry on.
Okay. So I just wanted, because I, I was thinking about this. So we take the enrollment funds, we increase them, and then we hand them over to these places. We don't have a say in how that money is spent, once it gets there, correct? So this money may or may not be used to elevate salaries, give benefits. We don't really know what this money will be used for. And it's an additional roughly $60,000. So we're, again, giving, we're giving more money to Oak, Encompass, YWCA, Peace Nursery. But we're not, we don't know what's going to happen with it. Is that fair?
It's my understanding, and I'm looking at Terry and John, that the funds we give to them will support the teachers in the programming. One of the things that we did note when John did a market study of what the neighboring school districts are doing to support these programs, we can see that they are getting additional resources. But they do have quite a bit of autonomy as to how they spend the money. So we can't, for example, say, you will give your teachers this and give them this or these benefits. We cannot say that. That's not part of what the Model 3 does. We provide the professional development and the supports for the academic programming for the students.
But here's, here's the concern I have as a board member and a steward of tax dollars. So we have additional funding. And we, I'm sure most of us would love to see that go to, to the teachers, to the staff. But we can't guarantee that that's going to happen. Now, I would be interested to know if, if the contracts have actually been finalized. And we would, would we be able to actually put this in as a part of the contract? Or is this something that we, is that already happened? Is that ship sailed? Because we're, we're coming with more funding, but we're not sure. And we just, I mean, the intention is nice, but the reality is the contract is, is better. And so what do we know is going to be done with this money?
So I looked into this a little bit because I actually, I do agree in principle that I think it would be good policy to, I think it is good policy when done right and thoughtfully for large organizations, which are one of the bigger checkbooks in a community, to set an example for having certain standards for contractors. Unfortunately, this item, which I think is a, would have been a reasonable and healthy public policy debate, Scott Walker, right, I believe, right before leaving office, signed legislation not only banning putting in wage and benefit standards requirements for contractors, not only making it illegal, but it's actually a crime with, with jail attached, which is unfortunate. So we, we can't have, we, we can't meaningfully have that healthy debate tonight. But I would say, in my, in my individual opinion, I would certainly take notice if, for example, we did such an increase and then we saw that none of those funds made their way to the staff providing the services. It would certainly be a factor when, kind of a significant factor for me when contracts were, were up. But as much as I'd like to have wage, some kind of a wage standard when we're giving a contractor more money, we, we can't.
Okay. But what we need to do is reflect back not that long ago when we literally took away a raise that we gave our own staff. Because it was, the conversation was that we had to, there was a deficit because of, of benefits coming in. So I hesitate to hand over more money to a place, people that have autonomy and that we can't, I mean, I understand what you're saying. That's not really the point. The point is that we are taking more, more, more money from the district and handing it over and, and not in control of the money.
And that's the Model 3 model.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's exactly right. But the proposal is to take more money and give it to the Model 3 model, where right now, we're struggling with what's going on there to begin with. And now we're going to give them more money, but we don't have any say in that. But again, I just kind of come back to, we took raises out of our own staff's pockets to handle a deficit not that long ago. I'm just wondering how we're okay to give this extra money when we're not even sure. If this money went there and it was given to the staff as, you know, an increase in salaries, I would be all over that. But we don't know that that's going to happen. And based on history, no, there's nothing there to tell me that it will happen. So first of all, I don't understand where this money's coming from when we literally went in to the raise of our staff not that long ago. And now we have this money to give and kind of throw it off as, in a balloon and hope that it lands in the right hands. I don't get it.
So, I, I'm not sure we've, the, the raises are coming, so that, that hasn't been negotiated at all, but...
Oh, actually, no, the raises, when we went into our, when we did the benefits proposal and we're making the teachers and the staff pay more, that, that is exactly how they see that, that the raises are, you know, for some kind of a wash. So, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification. The piece, the piece that I would offer is that we have a long history with these organizations. They have delivered high-quality services, and I, I have great confidence in Encompass, for example. They've done really good work and have been very responsive, and, and their staff, you know, I've not heard concerns coming out of those organizations. Now, I don't look for those concerns, but I know that Terri is, Terri works on Point and Mary McCabe. I, I can appreciate what you're saying, Rhonda, as far as we, and to Andrew's point, and I know Andrew had many conversations about this because it concerned him greatly, and it concerns us greatly, but unfortunately, we do not have that authority. So, then, we, I would say that the district has to then balance, and the board has to balance withholding the money and not handing the money to these organizations that do great work for kids, or, or take that opportunity just because of the way it's currently framed. I, I don't know how else the district would proceed, but I, that's where I, I, I see that. You know, I, I think to typically to monitor where it goes, I can certainly appreciate that as well.
Okay, so, I'm just going to clarify that there are concerns, and everyone sitting here knows this, and that's why this is actually on the agenda? So, to say that there aren't concerns?
I, I, I did not say there aren't concerns. I'm saying we have a history with a lot of the organizations, and they've been, they've, they've, there has been a concern with one.
Okay, thank you for saying that.
Absolutely, absolutely, there's been a concern in terms of what the wages are for the staff and, and also the, absolutely. The other, the other providers, I don't, I don't recall any concerns in that area, so...
And that is not what I was alluding to. I was alluding to the one area that we do have concerns with.
Okay.
And the concerns revolve around salary. So, it's just, I guess I'd like to know that that conversation has been had, and that if we're giving more money to them, that there's a likelihood that that concern would be alleviated. And as a person that's going to send more of everyone's tax dollars over there, it's, it's really hard for me to have the blind faith when I know the concerns are there today, before the money's even gone. So...
I, I'm not sure what others I'm thinking, and I think that's important, that we have a sense of where others are at with this conversation.
It's been made pretty clear that we have concerns about the salary and benefits, and I would, with, if we don't give them money, the salary and benefits are not going to go up. We can't dictate to them, but this certainly increases the chances that they'll take that money and put it toward salary and benefits, and that's, that's where I'm coming from on that.
Anyone else have any thoughts over there?
Yeah, I mean, I think similar to what, what Andrew said, that if we're kind of in between a rock and a hard spot, we can give the increase and see what they do with it, and I'll have to proceed from there accordingly.
All right, Sandy?
Maloney? Aye. Warren?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Sidney Cow?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that Myron Construction be awarded the bid for referendum project work at Red Smith K8 School in the amount of $2,325,535 as presented be approved.
And actually, do you want to talk, Mike? Go ahead.
We're requesting that this item be postponed until possibly the June 2nd, 3rd meeting. We're working with the contractors to make sure that we can review their bids in more thoroughly. Red Smith has a specialty roof on it, concrete tile, and we want to make sure that their bids include contractors that can install that type of roofing. So, we're just asking you not to act on this agenda item, and we'll postpone it until the next meeting.
So, move to table? Second.
Until the next meeting?
June 3rd, yeah.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney Cow?
Aye. Carried six zero.
Move that Myron Construction be awarded the bid for referendum project work at Wilder Elementary in the amount of $1,314,474 as presented be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry?
Any questions?
Just see if Mike is going to say something.
Yeah.
No. All right. This is low bid, so, yeah, it's pretty, pretty clear. All right, Sandy?
Sidney Cow? Aye. Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Carried six zero. Thanks, Mike.
All right, then, under Human Resources, I move that the table of organization be modified to include the position of Executive Director of Human Resources, 12 months, salary group 2, 114-887 to 133-590, and that the associated job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Now, just to be clear, this is not, this is not a new administrative, we're creating a new administrative position but not filling another one.
Correct.
Correct.
This is replacing Chief Financial, Chief Human Resource Officer, and then not backfilling the position.
Teaching and Learning Executive Director.
Okay.
Sandy?
McCoy? Aye. Becker?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney Cow?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move that the transfer of Teresa Williams, Executive Director on Special Assignment, 12 months, to Executive Director of Human Resources, 12 months at the district office at a salary of $130,917, group 2, 98th percentile, effective July 1st, 2019, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
Sidney Cow?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
Move that the transfer of Tammy Van, Principal, 12 months at the Early Learning Center, to Principal, 12 months at Head Start at a salary of $106,443, effective July 1st, 2019, as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
McCoy? Aye. Brandon Hubble?
Aye. Becker? Aye.
Warren? Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney Cow?
Aye.
Carried six zero.
I move the consent items as presented be approved.
Second.
Sandy?
Sidney Cow? Aye. Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Brandon Hubble?
Aye. Becker?
Carried six zero.
All right.
And then, I'll entertain the adjournment into closed session motion.
I move that the board... And we have to do the whole motion even if, even if we, we don't? Okay. I move that the board reconvene into closed session as per posting from earlier.
Second.
Sandy?
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy? Aye. Brandon Hubble?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Maloney?
Aye.
Sidney Cow?
Aye.
Carried six zero. We'll go across the hall.